You're tuning into the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is 11:17 a.m. We were having some technical difficulties, but we got those figured out. This is a virtual meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the Thurston County YouTube channel. There's also a call-in option. The phone number is 360-252-9020 and number 1234. I am Carolina Mejia, Chair of the Board. I am joined by Vice Chair Ty Mensah joining me via Zoom, as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards in the boardroom and County Manager Romero Chavez. Robin Campbell, our Assistant County Manager, joining us via Zoom, and Diana, a staff member. Today, we are discussing the American Rescue Plan Funds, and so I will pass this on to Robin Camino.
I'm going to ask if Romero would like to open the discussion and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. What you will hear today from staff is revisiting some of the decisions, the preliminary decisions the board has made related to the allocations of the American Rescue Plan. Some you already still under draft form, and some decisions you have already made to actually start implementing some of the strategies outlined in this. Attached to your packet is a hope is familiar report as to how the allocations that you have made and also the decisions that you have been approved. So you will hear from Robin, based on the allocations the board made and the decisions that you made to go ahead and implement some of those expenditures, we have gone over the allocated amount the federal government has given us, this $56 million. So we're going to go through that, and also we're going to be provided with some options for you to consider as to how we can bring those expenditures back to where we need to be, and also a key decision on related to loss of revenue, and that is going to be a pivotal point of this conversation as well. Robin?
Great, thank you, Romero. And I'm just going to go over the agenda. Diana's going to actually give you some high-level information about the fund and the current allocations, what decisions are needed. Then we're going to talk about revenue replacement and the decision that's necessary there. We'll give you just a high-level overview of what we have to report to you as Treasury and when. And then we also have, again, a high-level summary of all of the funds that the county has received in response to the COVID pandemic. I would like to say before I turn it over to Diana, we do need decisions today, and I apologize for bringing you information and asking for decisions today, but we have to submit the report to U.S. Treasury. We're going to start to try to do the data entry on Friday because the report is due in final form on Monday. And we just received the reporting template and the detailed information in the final rule, and a lot of this information from U.S. Treasury in early January. So we have not had it very long to be able to bring to you. So that's why we have a very tight turnaround, and again, I apologize for that, but we hope we've got enough information this morning for you to be able to make those decisions. So again, Diana's going to walk you through the allocations and talk a little about revenue replacement, and then I'll outline the recommendation that we have for you. Go ahead, Diana.
Thank you, Robin. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Diana Aaron, Senior Management Analyst and Senior Budget Analyst for COVID-19 Projects. I've been in this role for four months, and before we begin, I'm going to let you know that I'm honored to be serving in this role, and I want to be a resource to you for any questions or any needs you have around this fund. The use of these funds are governed by the U.S. Department of Treasury interim final rule and also the final rule, which comes into effect on April 1st of this year. Currently, both rules are in effect, and we're able to take advantage of some of the changes that have made in the final rule right away. I will tell you more about those coming up. Our first quarterly ARPA project and expenditure report is due on January 31st. Robin will be pleased to know that data entry has already begun. And we have been working on it with our team, and we're on track to have it submitted to Treasury on time. I wanted to draw your attention to the ARPA Thurston County Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Table of Expenses by Expenditure Category. This is in your packet, and it is yellow across the top. Yeah, it looks like this. Oh, it's going to blur. Do you all have it at hand?
No, no, no material?
Yes, yellow.
Yep, you got it.
Very good. So this is kind of a mouthful of a fund, so we've been referring to it as ARPA funds or as the recovery fund. So you may hear us say those interchangeably. This is a listing of projects and funding that the board has approved, and also projects and funding under consideration by the board. The listed expenditures are through December 31st of 2021, because that's our current reporting period. And there are totals for each column at the bottom of page two. Some of the allocations align to these expenditure categories, broad expenditure categories like public health. The allocation and approved and earmarked for public health is $6,302,978, and negative economic impacts, just over $19 million. Services to disproportionately impacted communities, $9 million.
Where are you seeing that?
It's on the PowerPoint.
This is the PowerPoint, Commissioner, and I've shared the screen so that the public can follow along. We're giving you high-level numbers rather than going line by line through this worksheet.
Okay, got it.
These numbers correspond to a sum of the listing of each project in that category, and we can talk more about specific projects later if you would like. Revenue replacement, the current allocation under consideration is $9 million. We'll have another proposal for you to consider, and for administration, other, just over $2.7 million. So I'd like to draw your attention to the bottom of page two, to the sum of the approved amount and under consideration. In the very bottom, there's a yellow section, U.S. Treasury award. So our ARPA award is $56,466,212. And as Robin mentioned, a couple of projects have been added to this list and approved by the board that have brought the total amount of approved and under consideration into variance with the award. It's just over $1.5 million. This is the...
So basically, at the bottom line, what we're telling you is we've got $56 million, $56.4, and you have approved and earmarked 58, so we need to cut it back.
I guess my first question is, how did we do more than we had? How did that come about?
That's a good question. We had this imbalance, and the two that were added that pushed it over the top were on the first page, 1.6b Medical Expenses Employee Testing for $600,000, and that was approved by the board for the Thurston County's portion of the payment for coronavirus testing for employees who have opted for testing rather than vaccination. And the second project that was added that pushed out of balance was 1.8a COVID Paid Leave for County Employees. So we have...
Is that last one?
Sure, that's on page one. It's 1.8a, so it's in the middle of the page.
Yep, got it.
COVID Paid Leave for County Employees. So as you approve things and add things, we add them to the list, and if those are added without a corresponding adjustment to either things under consideration or other projects, and that would push this out of balance. I know it seems like you've got this ARPA money, but of course, these are one-time funds that are time-limited and also finite for these projects, so...
Could I ask you a quick question on that?
Yes.
How much of those designated items, so you're like on 1.8a, we've got $1,092,000 designated, I guess, and we've spent $147,000?
Correct, in the first month and a half.
Okay, so I guess what I'm wondering about there, if we didn't spend anymore, would that solve part of that problem?
It would, Commissioner Edwards, but the thing is that we know we are going to spend more. The employee leave item, that is authorizing payment for one paid day of sick leave, which is the incentive that vaccinated employees in the county received for being vaccinated, plus 32 hours of sick leave if someone is ill with COVID or caring for someone with COVID. So those are part of the incentive that the board authorized. We're using ARPA money to cover those costs. Part of our proposal that you hear is maybe we don't use ARPA for the whole amount, but we know people are using this leave.
Okay, I guess I have another question on that issue. Over the past week, the President's mandates have been overruled, and as far as I know, I think this morning on the national news, he recognized that his mandates were unconstitutional and out of line. So I know we did a mandate here, and I think some employees were let go because of it, and maybe we're doing other things because of it. I'm wondering, is this the right time maybe to talk about doing what the President is doing, which is saying, "I recognize the Supreme Court was right, I was wrong," and doing away with his mandate business, which might alleviate our need to do some of these things? I'm not saying this particular one. I'm just saying, have we got another safety net that's just developed as recent as maybe this morning, at least on the East Coast?
So I would defer to Romero, but I would say before I do that, that this is not the time. We have very little time this morning, and we do need decisions from you this morning. But I do believe that that's a discussion that will come up. Romero, I'm going to turn it to you.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
Commissioner Mensah, can I see that? You guys said you previewed that you might have a suggestion, but since we are running out of time, my thought is keep it really simple, split the shortfall between housing and broadband, which were just kind of projects we would like to do, not getting into, they're not directly COVID response-related, and then we're done. But maybe you've got a better suggestion?
We have something a little different. Before we go to that, we do want to highlight the new lost revenue opportunity because that just makes it a little more of an issue, a bigger issue.
Okay, I guess to expedite the process, kind of what Commissioner Mensah is doing, this I did have the opportunity to read last night. And so I think we ought to go ahead, I mean, my initial response without hearing everything from you guys, just quoting over the material you're going to cover, is to go ahead and accept the $10 million that we're allowed to take, I'm going to say in one lump sum, I don't know if that's true or not, and a one-time deal, and get it over with, and then this other stuff, like Commissioner Mensah said, we can discuss farther down the road.
Great, well, we are happy to just jump ahead to the decision part.
Yeah, with all due respect, the other points, the recommendations that we have for you, we cannot wait down the road because the report is due by the end of the year, by the end of the month.
Yeah.
So if you like, we can jump onto, okay, we already presented the issue to you. We have a gap the board needs to address of $1,572,000. That is the issue.
Okay.
Plus an extra million because we've never booked.
Which is the $10 million. So that puts us in the category of $2.5 million if the board agrees to take the one-time $10 million of our lost revenue. Now, for that, you go to the sheet blue, in blue, and then yellow is the recommendations that the staff has to address the gap.
Okay, roll.
Okay, hold on. This is one where Commissioner Edwards is more prepared than I am, and I don't want to skip over the $10 million lost revenue explanation because I don't quite get it yet.
Okay, so we'll go back to that. Diana, would you like to outline the lost revenue?
Sure. First, I want to say that I appreciate the Commissioners wanting to get straight to the solution, and your suggestions also. We have a suggestion, and if you'd like to go with a different method, you know, we're open to that, obviously. The first thing we need to cover, though, is that the final rule allows for a different method for ARPA revenue replacement, which is the ability to take a flat amount of $10 million rather than calculate our revenue loss. So the pro to that is that we know how much we're getting, and the calculation is easy. We just take the $10 million. The con to that is there's always the chance that we could have calculated more than $10 million. However, we believe with our current calculator that that would not be the case. Our estimate for revenue loss for 2022 is zero. So our recommendation is that the board consider the $10 million for revenue replacement.
Another advantage of the $10 million is that when we first put these allocations together, my initial guesstimate, and it was just a guess, was that maybe over the four years, we'd be able to claim $9 million. And because I was not confident whatsoever in that $9 million, in your general fund forecast, I included $7 million. So if you take the $10 million, that's an extra $3 million available to you for other purposes. And the lost revenue, just as a reminder, can be spent on any usual and customary government service with three exceptions. And those exceptions are you cannot make a direct deposit into a rainy day fund, you cannot pay on previous debt, and you cannot make a direct contribution into a pension fund. But other than that, lost revenue money can be spent for any legitimate purpose. We've already programmed that money, $7 million of it into the general fund, but there would be $3 million available for other things.
Robin, I'm sorry.
May I add one thing, which is that if we were to do that, then the $3 million would need to be adjusted from other areas. Go ahead.
Right, only $1 million adjusted from other areas because there's nine on your list. So Commissioner Mensah, you've got a question.
Can you talk a little bit more about the 2021 2.4 and then your 2022 estimate zero? Why is that?
Right, because what I think is going on, and we had talked about this... Right, because, um, what I think is going on, and, and we had talked about this, uh, in the budget process, our revenues are going up substantially. We're getting more money from the state, and the way you do the, um, calculation method for ARPA is you look at, um, all revenue with very few exclusions. You exclude federal money, um, you exclude utilities, now that's an option, by the way. But, um, when we did the calculation last year and compared the amount of revenue we received in twenty twenty to twenty nineteen, which is the base year, and use the assumed growth that US Treasury allowed, we were short by two point four, almost two point five million dollars, so we were able to claim that as lost revenue. When we do that same calculation now and compare the twenty twenty-one revenue to the base year, twenty nineteen again, um, and apply the growth factor, even with the higher growth factor, we have so much revenue that we do not qualify. And as you know, our revenue went up in sales tax, we've seen just crazy growth in sales tax. Um, we've got money coming from the state, the Blake money, that bonus million, if you will, for, um, criminal justice purposes. Just because the money is one-time and has restricted uses, um, we still have to count it in this calculation. And so when we did the calculation this year, we're not entitled to any lost revenue.
So, and we have REIT money in there too, don't we, extra?
Oh yeah, REIT's counted, it's growing like crazy.
So it sounds like Commissioner Edwards is right, on track, and we should grab that ten million flat.
I highly recommend taking the ten million.
Yeah, I am in agreement with that.
The slide states it, but I do want to point out that this is an irrevocable decision. Once we make this decision on the thirty-first, we can't go back.
Right, so they, they let us choose one time, but knowing the twenty twenty-two numbers, um, makes me pretty confident that it's a good deal.
I, I, I'd like to point out one other thing, Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, also, it might be irrevocable, but in my estimation, and having been involved around government for a heck of a long time, uh, three years or four years, whatever they would allow, uh, to come up with a total, and Robin said maybe we'd make nine or something like that. I mean, that's a long time for Congress to review and make other arrangements. So I think it would behoove us to move forward at this point in time.
So you don't want to move forward on the ten million?
I do want to move forward on the ten million.
So I think.
Because, because I think somewhere down the road, there's also a chance.
Well, yeah, I mean.
You know, something else is gonna do.
What Diana's stating is based on the current guidance.
Right, there you go.
If, if the board decides to go ahead and take advantage of claiming the ten million dollars, which I totally agree is a great deal, because that expedites the process of claiming lost revenue. It creates an additional three million dollars discretionary, based on the restrictions, the three restrictions they, Robin stated, for the board to consider doing something at one time.
Right.
I think that this creates an incredible opportunity for the board to take advantage of. Whether the guidance changes down the road, you're probably absolutely correct, but we, based on what we know right now, this is where we are.
Uh, even, even recognizing that, uh, that things can change. I mean, you all heard me say for years that we had a bubble coming in sales tax, and that came out.
I've heard that before.
You've heard that before, haven't you? Well, we've also got some problems coming down the pike as the interest rates strike, uh, start raising, and, uh, we've got some, some issues coming on inflation. And so, yeah, we could have some adjusted towards that nine million that Robin looked at. But the work it would take to develop that, uh, on staff's part, to me, is tremendous. And, uh, I just think we better, uh, what's that bird in the hand is worth two in the bush, or whatever the old timers used to say? I, I think we better take it, and we better take it now, and then figure out what else you need.
Okay, so let me, let me ask the board, um, just to make sure that I, I'm tracking your decision to take advantage of this one-time ten million dollars loss of revenue, uh, so we can claim that. Do I see that concurs with the board?
Yes.
Um, so.
Yep, thank you. Now, the next, uh, another you want to jump into the solutions. Now, we have proposals for you as to how we're gonna be, uh, meeting the fifty-six, four hundred thirty-three thousand allocation. Um, and we have some proposals as to where you may consider reducing the allocation at some point you may, uh, Diana, Robin?
Sure, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
Can you explain, um, so I see the shortfall of one point six million, but then somebody was talking about an extra million? I didn't quite catch what that's about.
The, the extra million is because the, um, allocation worksheet, the, the yellow one, had assumed nine million for lost revenue, and we're going to take ten. So there's an extra million that we have to reduce from somewhere else.
Okay.
Because lost revenue still has to fit within the fifty-six million award.
I'm with you, got it.
Great, so here's the places where we are recommending we reduce. You, and they're highlighted in yellow on the worksheet that has the blue header. On page two is the list of water and sewer and broadband projects. Um, for water and sewer, we are recommending that we reduce each project by two hundred and fifty thousand. And the reason we're recommending reducing the infrastructure projects is we think that there will be more money coming from other places. We have the federal infrastructure bill, we don't know how much we'll be able to tap into for those, but there, it's got great opportunity. The, um, state grants are always available. We just think there's going to be a lot more money for infrastructure. So the first item is reducing each of those by two hundred and fifty. The next one that we're recommending is reducing broadband by a million dollars. And again, uh, we see money coming from all kinds of sources for broadband. Uh, so we think that, um, taking a million off the table in ARPA is not going to harm our ability to go forward with the broadband projects. We'll be able to get other money. And then the last item is to decrease by almost half, or a little over half, uh, the money that we use from ARPA to pay for the COVID leave. And, um, that is because, uh, employees already have a hundred percent of their salary and leave budgeted. And just because they take leave does not incur additional cost. This is just, um, less of a, a bonus, if you will, um, not covering the money with ARPA. And I know I'm not explaining that terribly well, but the money to pay for salaries is already in office and department budget. So what we have left would be used on a first-come, first-served basis until it's gone. So questions about the proposal?
I don't have any questions.
I like it.
Okay, if you don't have any question, then can I ask to get a thumbs up to accept this proposal? One, two, three, all right? Then, in the interest of time, unless you have any other questions, we'll just move to the next, um, slide. Uh, and this is just for your information. Uh, part of the responsibility with accepting the ARPA money is that we have reports that are due to US Treasury. There are two major reports. Uh, the first is the project and expenditure report, it is a quarterly report. The first one is due on, uh, January thirty-first. Um, because it is the very first one, it's going to cover March third through December thirty-first. And March third, because that is the date that the, uh, American Rescue Plan Act was enacted. Um, and then in this report, we just very simply, it's not simple, but, but, um, the, uh, information that we report is, uh, the amount of money that was spent, budgeted, and obligated, which is why we needed the decision today on, uh, how you want to spend the money, because we have to report that now. Um, I would mention that just because we report the budgeted amounts to, uh, US Treasury does not lock us into this distribution. You can still adjust in the future how we spend the money.
Right.
So, but we do need to report it now. We have to report project information, which means, um, the descriptions of the projects that you're approving, and the partners that we're working with, subcontractors, subrecipients, um, but people we give large grants to, we have to report all of that information to US Treasury. And additional information on infrastructure projects, such as what the timeframe for them is anticipated to be. And we'll be submitting this report every quarter. And then once a year, we have to, uh, report the recovery plan performance report. You may recall I prepared a report in August. Um, we have to update that report each year. So in addition to all the expenditure information, we also need every year to report, um, more detailed program information, information on how we are supporting equitable outcomes with this money, how we engage the community, and how we spent the money, what our labor practices are for infrastructure projects, use of evidence-based interventions, the award requires some of that, and, uh, performance indicators, and we'll prepare this report every year. So those are the things that we are obligated to report to US Treasury. Um, and we just wanted you to know that we're collecting all those things that we have to, um, and this is quite onerous. Um, federal, federal money comes with ropes, not strings, and this, this one is, uh, got a whole lot of them. It's a lot of money. Then the other thing that we wanted to bring to your attention, just is the, um, overview. We've, we've mentioned this a few times, and you've asked for a report on just how much money has the county brought in, uh, in response to COVID. And I've, uh, told you on a few occasions that it's over a hundred million dollars. Well, we have prepared a grant summary for you. And you've got that in your packet. Uh, the title is Thurston County State and Federal Grants for COVID Response. When we first prepared this PowerPoint, um, the tracker had a hundred and twenty million, but we have updated numbers, and we want you to have the latest, greatest information. So your, um, document that you have in your packet has the most current numbers and have updated the PowerPoint. The county's actually received over a hundred and forty-eight million dollars from state and federal sources since March of twenty twenty, specifically to respond to COVID. That is a huge amount when you compare it. Uh, our annual entire general fund is in the hundred and ten million dollar range. So we've, we've just received a tremendous amount of money over the last two years. Uh, the major funding has been the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Uh, you will recall in twenty twenties, the county received twenty-one point four million. We've received nearly fifty million in housing and rental assistance grants, and the money for that seems to keep on coming. The American Rescue Plan Act that we've just been talking about is fifty-six point four million. Uh, that is not as restricted as other sources, but still has limitations on how it can be used. Public Health has received fifteen point five million dollars, mainly through the consolidated contract with the Department of Health, um, to respond, and that's to do, um, disease control, contract tracing, community outreach, isolation, quarantine, um, all of the things uh, that public health is responsible for. We've received fifteen point five million in grants, and the majority of that is spent. Um, and then FEMA has provided so far, three point six million for mass vaccinations. That funding continues, and, uh, we receive it as we claim it. We don't know how much longer that will go on. But, um, as of now, three point six million has been spent in vaccinations. So this is a whole lot of money coming into the county. This is a very high-level overview, you have the details. Um, and we will update this now on a regular basis, um, probably monthly, uh, and add it to the monthly management report.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, okay, I've got your adjusted here from one twenty to one forty-eight, so I wrote that, penciled that in myself. Is this sheet, the blue one that you were just going over, is it already updated reflecting these numbers you just gave us, or is there some reflection yet to take place here on this sheet?
So I, I can't.
Uh, that's the blue one, uh, Thurston County State and Federal Grants for COVID-nineteen Response.
Yes, that is up to date as of yet.
This one's up to date.
Yes, sir.
So the, the numbers here are reflected in this PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, then my next, maybe my, I hope my final question would be, where does fraud fit in? And, uh, when are we obligated to report? And the amount, and how does it all fit? And how do we explain it? And we're not gonna be unique, you know, it's going on around the country, so where are we at?
Right, so, so we are, um, constantly, uh, doing our diligence to watch for fraud. Uh, we are monitoring expenditures, we are reviewing all invoices. We do subrecipient monitoring as required. Um, so all of those things, we, we have proper controls in place in Thurston County. Um, so if there is fraud going on, we will hopefully catch it. Our obligation to report, if we suspect there is fraud, then our obligation is to report that immediately to the Office of the State Auditor. And we would be working in coordination with our county auditor and the treasurer to report any suspected fraud that we may find.
Yeah, also, we engage our internal auditor to help us go through a check and balance as we move along, just to make sure that we check all the, uh, you know, uh, strike the, the check and balances that Robin stated. So we implement every tool available to us, just to make sure that we do our due diligence and, um, uh, on, on tracking the, the money.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
I was just gonna kind of summarize something, and it kind of dovetails with Commissioner Edwards' point. Like, the reason that subrecipient fraud is a big issue, or could be an issue, is because if you add up this hundred and twenty million, just off the top, like, like sixty million is what I came up with. So exactly half of it is just basically touching the county and going right, and went right out the door. So if you add up thirty-one million dollars to, for housing assistance, nineteen point four million for economic support, that went to Thurston Strong. Nine million for social services, that went right out to, I think it was United Way, and, and there was a, there was a coalition of groups that were helping us with that. So these aren't dollars that the county expended, deployed itself, staffed itself, you know, directly, you know. So that's, I just want the folks to understand that. Um, 120 million is a lot, but 60 million of that went right directly out into the community in various ways, but we have that responsibility to kind of track it. But um, still a lot of money, but it's not exactly like 120 million just then got deployed by the county. Um, you know, uh, it's.
The vast majority, y- yes, to your point, the vast majority of this money is passed through, well over half of it.
Which, which, you know, I think the board has made those decisions because uh, you have been very compassionate and helping the community. You know, and from the beginning, that has been, I believe, the, the, the objective of the board. Because if this money came to the county in, in, in order to help the community, you have made those efforts. You have made those decisions to really bring uh, the dollars to help uh, our community. So, and that's right on point, so.
I want to highlight too that about nine months ago, when the Chamber of, Thurston Chamber of Commerce had its first um, in-person event and there was a lot of praise get doled out by the leadership of the chamber to the county for the way we looked externally. They, they, they were tracking other counties, how they were using their dollars and, and they were saying that a lot of counties just basically kept the money and used it for internal needs and didn't look externally and, and get that money out into the community for whether it was business support, social services, the way Thurston County did. So they're very complimentary of our approach and I, I was very proud of that um, of that feedback we got from the chamber and, and I think that, you know, we did a good job of striking that balance.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's what we have for you today. And thank you very much for.
I just had one thing. I just wanted to thank you for your action today to bring this back into balance. And just note that as additional projects are added, uh, we may revisit this conversation and make sure it stays in balance.
Right, and thank you Diana, that is something that, that we do want to stress with the board. Um, from here on out, the money is basically spent, the ARPA money. If you'd like to do something new with it, we'll need to know where you'd like to reduce. So as, as we come forward now, um, whenever you ask me, is this eligible for ARPA? I might say yes, but I might also say, where would you like to cut?
That's usually me.
Well, and to that point, I mean, I've been expecting, I mean, I don't think we all understood that Omicron and all, you know, I mean, the fact, like, the magnitude of our public health response that's still going on here in 2022, I don't think we predicted. So I fully expected you guys to be coming back going, guess what, guys? We need another 5 million in public health, like where are we gonna reduce our earmarks? So I, I do understand, I was just looking at the sheet and it looks like we've got everything covered right now, but it won't be a surprise to me if, if that's the conversation we have to have.
Great.
Um, Chair?
Go ahead, sir.
Before you close the meeting, uh, I, I brought this up earlier in the meeting, but I think it's of utmost importance that we convene as soon as we possibly can to talk about the Supreme Court's decision, mandates, maybe employees that uh, lost their job or whatever happened, make sure those people are made whole and try to mitigate any exposure to liability as early as we possibly can. So that's just a, a point in closing.
Y- yeah, maybe, maybe a quick response to that.
Okay.
And, and I think uh, we, the board had a, a conversations related to that when the board took an action related to vaccine mandate was prior to President Biden trying to implement the same mandate under OSHA. What, uh, the, the issue the Supreme Court, as I understand, is strike down using OSHA as a, a, a tool to implement vaccine mandates to private industries. The, the board took an action prior to that, similar to what the governor did prior to that in terms of the vaccine mandate. The vaccine mandate the board took, an action was not related to OSHA or that's not related to LNI. So this conversation occurred in the past, but certainly uh, it's something the board may need to consider, whether you'd like to continue with this or not. But that's a, a, another set of conversations. I just want to close that because this conversation did occur um, uh, when even was going through the court process uh, related to President Biden's uh, uh, mandate. Because the board again took an action prior to that initiative by the president and uh, and the action that you took was not related to OSHA.
I, I won't argue that point with you, sir. Uh, but my goal is to try and get beyond this, uh, limit our exposure as quickly as we possibly can because the unconstitutionality of this really is gonna have ramifications down the road. That's all, I'm just trying to get ahead of it.
No, absolutely, that, I'm not prepared for the board to help this conversation. I just want to uh, bring back what uh, has ever been discussed. This is just my perspective.
Yep.
My humble perspective. Uh, and uh, and certainly anytime the board likes to revisit any type of past actions, you're in the position to do so at any time.
Okay, I missed over three. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.